Mr. Burdy, members of the board, we have several items for board discussion this evening. Our first item is Board of Education goals, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burdy.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As I stated a couple meetings ago in our last work session, I thought it might be a good idea for the board to come up with some reasonable goals that we could attach to the upcoming school year, and that we really have never done this before, but we do ask our treasurer and our superintendent to come up with some goals that we rate their effectiveness on, so it might be a good idea for us to maybe start that process of us setting some goals for ourselves, and something that we can look at and mid-year kind of reflect on our progress, and then at the end of the year, kind of see how we did and try to move forward. I'm thinking about goals that would make the board more effective, make us maybe more visible in the community, that's kind of what I'm looking for, and Mrs. Gentry Fletcher's going to kind of put them up on the board there, and that way, we can kind of tweak them if we have a suggestion from a board member, but another board member would like to tweak it a little bit, and then maybe whatever the board feels like doing, three, four goals that we can go with this year. So I'll open up the floor if anyone would like to start with a suggestion.
I mean, I definitely feel setting a goal for community involvement, whether or not it's we each attend X amount of school functions per quarter, something like that. Is that specific, or do you want it more specific, or can we refine that?
Yeah, I think we can refine it a little bit. I think that's things that I'm looking for. I know most of us go to the high-profile sporting events and the high-profile arts events, but I would like to see maybe on top of that, go to events where it's not high-profile, some of the ones that are not attended well by the community, but show the support for things like the academic team or the swim team.
And I would say too, you know, it's often at those high-school level activities, so I would also just add that it's also elementary, you know, from the whole range of grades.
Fifth or fourth grade chorus concerts, those types of things. It would be interesting to try to figure out how we track that, or maybe self-police it, but, you know, maybe we can report back to the board, like, hey, I'm going to be attending this event, I'm going to go to the Westernairs, is that the name of there? I'm going to go to that spring concert.
Right.
And that way, we're not doubling up on things, maybe we can try to spread ourselves out and see other things as well. I think that's a great, great idea.
Along those lines, I had a couple, maybe a little more specific even. Assuming we're going to continue the Be the Difference program, I think it's such an excellent program, I've attended it each year we've done it, there are three days for the high school and two days for the middle school, I think it would be great to see all board members commit to making one of those.
One of the days.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, so Be the Difference, and what's the other one called?
ID project.
ID project. The ID project. Yeah, I think that's, that's good. I remember doing that with you a couple years ago, and that was really impactful, and the students really appreciated that, that they were board members there.
It does take volunteers to make that program work, and what a great way to volunteer, and along those same lines, building off of that, wouldn't it be great if we all volunteered in some capacity in the schools, whether that's at a Crystal Classic, or the Arts Fair, or even in a classroom, right? We hear presentations about how all the great things happening in classrooms, but I don't get into classrooms very often, right?
I'm just going to say before I forget it, because I'm getting old now, but I would love to go to the middle school to see, you know, the advisory group, I would love to go to see one of the, you know, where they have, just to see what that's like, we've talked about, like, that's a new program that we've implemented since, you know, in the past couple of years, it'd be great to, and that doesn't mean that we all need to go to that, but that.
Right, right, you know, it doesn't have to be a big deal, I'm not looking to cause a scene or any distraction, but to come in and to volunteer, to participate, to see it firsthand, I think there's some value in that.
I do realize that some of us have more freedom during the school day than others, so it may not be physically possible that everybody can do that.
Absolutely.
It's a goal that we could set, and maybe the goal could be, two-thirds of the board gets to the ID project instead of 100 percent.
Sure.
And in that way, that could even be the next year, the two that couldn't make it could make it that year type of thing.
Yeah.
And that way, we could overachieve our goal if everybody makes it, but I would hate to say, let's get 100 percent participation, because, you know, we don't even know what each other's involvement are with our normal nine-to-five job.
Yeah.
So I think that would be, would be good.
I also had, and I think we've already kind of stated, I said, attend a school event you've never attended before, so, you know, the ones that we frequent, that's great, we'll continue to frequent them, but what about something else?
And we could even maybe set a goal to, like, once a semester, go to something different, that's two a year, that's not.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, I know around Christmas, it's easy to go to a concert, there are so many of them, but, you know, be able to spread that around would be, would be pretty neat.
One of the things that I thought of, because we haven't, I haven't heard about this in a while, since Lori Cage, and she's in Columbus now, but she used to gather the school board members up, and I think at least two of us, it used to be Mr. Hare and myself, we would participate in Write or Read Week, so you go out to the grade schools and you read to the kids, that is so good. I haven't done it in a while, and I think, you know.
Usually, we got a notification about that.
We used to get notification, I don't get it anymore.
I remember I read Charlie in the talk-up factory in my classroom, that was pretty fun.
Yeah, that was really good, I'm not sure what's going on with the program right now, or the level of activity that's still surrounding it, but I would definitely love to be involved with that, that was so, so good, you know, because the kids aren't paying attention, you get a chance to kind of revert back to when your kids were little, so some of us have high schoolers now, I can't believe I'm saying that. So that would be one. The other item that I was thinking of was like a book study, it's been a while since we did that, the board and the administration, we had committed to reading a couple of different books, I think we should select the book that the majority of us are interested in and commit to reading in it, perhaps in our work sessions, we can have some conversation about it, some topic in education or student wellness, something like that, something that we would, we would pick.
Okay.
Those sort of things.
Mrs. Gundrum, would you like to add anything?
Well, along the lines of what has already been said, and I think particularly what Mr. Begley mentioned, is when I started thinking about this, I thought about if different groups in school were having fundraisers, we could go and help, help them participate in that, or if there, another thing I thought of was if there were groups that were perhaps doing some type of community service, that board members could go join in and perform a service with them, so we get to know the students better, they get to know us better, and we're all doing a community project together.
That's good. Some of the things that I also thought about was, I think this goes along the lines with community involvement, was maybe a board member attend the community coffees that our district leaders have, they just have one board member at each of the coffees, just to support them, if nothing else, but there might be, when they're out in the community and the community members see a board member there, they can see that there's a good relationship between the administration and the Board of Education, that might be something that we could do. I thought it might be neat for a board member to try to attend an out-of-town competition, you know, the marching band does several out-of-town things.
I do that already.
I know.
Well, your child's not a part of, right?
I'm there, they know it's there for all of them.
I know it's a major commitment, but, I mean, I'm not talking about, you know, going to Denver, Colorado, or anything, but something that's driving distance, that you could go.
Canton, Ohio.
You know, track meet, or, you know, something, an out-of-town event, I think it shows commitment to the community, that the board is involved. I did have the book thing down here, I thought that was a really good idea. Also, I think maybe a board member tried to go to the Business Advisory Council meeting. You know, they, I think they're kind of just now forming themselves and trying to get their own identity, I think having a board member there, we also then understand what they're trying to do, so that when it's reported back to us, the board member has at least gone there, and, now, we can't have three board members attend without noticing it as a board meeting, but I think that would be maybe a goal we could do. Also, I think, this is one that I love to do, is, is a personal development, you know, try to go to an OSBA, we got reminders here, you know, that we do have an upcoming event, but these are great opportunities to learn more about, you know, governance in the schools, and trying to, to make an event, and they have some, I think throughout the year, that are not even as far away as Columbus, I think they have other ones available, so I think that would be a good goal, to try to do some sort of personal development. If you can't go to one of these, maybe pick up some literature or a book about school board member governance and learn about it, and I think each of us could do that, I think that's something that all the board members could do. If they can't travel to a meeting, at least read a book that kind of gives us guidance on how to govern. So those are just kind of some of my ideas.
Yeah, one of the other things, because I think that's a really good idea, I do think that we need to have one or two board members that are attending the district, the CDA meetings, I'm not sure if there are any other board members that are interested in doing that, but I think it's important to have a presence there, so I would recommend that as, as a, as a goal.
So the, there's a district CDA, and then there's building CDAs as well, right? So you're looking for the district?
District, or if they want to attend both.
Anybody else have any ideas that they'd like to add up there, or tweak what's up there, and then now we should start having some sort of conversation about ones that we want I think, I think what we could do is, we could take these ideas, like the community involvement, we can list that as one of our goals, or maybe we do try to, by our next meeting, refine that a little bit, to see what exactly that is.
Because that could be, you know, attending a community coffee, or attending an out-of-the-town event, or volunteering in a classroom, and that provides us with, regardless of what our schedule is, that could be a weekend thing, that could be a weekday thing, I think, so maybe under community involvement, we kind of group a bunch of those.
Group a bunch in, and say each board member should try to attend three of these things.
Yeah, yeah, per.
Per semester, whatever.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Another thing I was kind of kicking around is that, you know, we should try to, the board should try to attend one of our local government meetings, city council, county commission, the trustees meet, you know, those are all, what happens at those meetings sometimes affects our schools, so, you know, the parks committee, the business development committee, planning committee meetings, try to attend once, one a year, or one every so often, so that we get a firm grasp about what's going on. I have an advantage, I do go to the trustee meetings, but I have a vested interest there.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, even, even the county commission wouldn't hurt what's going on there, how, you know, what's the tax situation, and the city council, I mean, I haven't, I have never been to a city council meeting, fairytale, it probably is in our best interest, we do have a representative there every meeting, our law advisor, but maybe a good idea for a board member to try to attend, but maybe we should come up with some sort of number, you know, or do we just say, each board member, as a goal, attend one local government meeting a year, just, just as a starting point? I mean, is that something that's feasible, or?
I think so, yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we want to do more community involvement, and we should try to list several things, we have a nice list up there, and then we should set a goal of maybe trying to, each board member attending three of those events a semester of what's listed, and we could have really, you know, classroom, so all that is included in that. I think we should have the, and I think CDA probably could be in that as well, or maybe we, do we want to group CDA with local government?
That seems more like local government to me than a community CDA.
CDA, Community Diversity Alliance.
I was thinking it was that, never mind that, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
A BAC.
CDA.
Sorry.
So you think the Business Advisory, we could link that with the government meeting, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I was thinking, but I.
Under the school umbrella, the CDA, Business Chiefs.
Yeah, school umbrella, that's really local government.
So I think you were right. Yeah, it's okay.
So we have community involvement as one, I think we all can agree on that, we would like to have that as a goal, and then we can kind of see what that looks like. How do you feel about the personal development, trying to go to an OSBA or an NSBA, or, you know, try to read a book? And I mean, that's just kind of trying to better yourself as a board member, because there's things that I learn every time, and I've been going to them for six years now, and every time I go, I learn something new, like, oh wow, I think I've maybe not done that right, so I think those are great, and even if, like I said, even if it's, go to OSB website, and I think they have books out there on the website that you could purchase, or maybe even, I don't know, if you could download them to a reader, I'm not sure, but, I mean, that would count as, you know, personal development, so in my opinion, I think we should have that as, as one of the goals. How do you guys feel about that?
I don't know.
Okay, the personal development is another goal. I will tell you, I am interested into the book study, I'd like to know, like, how that worked before, was it, who decided what books were selected?
Before, it was, it was actually Kathy Religent, the superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah, Sue Jones.
Is that something that you do already, Billy, with administrators, or?
We have done it with administrators, and I think we did it a few years ago with administrators, and then we shared with the board that we were doing it, and I'm not sure if any of the board members may have, you know, read it, but we didn't do anything in public, you know, at board meetings, we did some things as, at administrative meetings in the district, you know, as part of the study, but not at board meetings.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure, obviously, we couldn't discuss that outside of, although, I don't know, we'd have to ask our legal counsel, it's not really, we're not discussing board business, if we're discussing a book we read, or how that would work.
Well, the definition is a pre-arranged discussion of the public's business by a majority of its members, but the problem is, if you say the business is a book study, to have you, I would prefer you just do it in meetings, you know, take some, schedule it on your agenda, avoid the question. You could argue that it's not board business, but if that's what you've chosen to make it.
Yeah.
The book study to me is similar, it's, it's personal development as well, I feel like a little bit, maybe, maybe we try what's there listed first this year for personal development, and next year, do the book study kind of a replacement of that.
Or maybe if the administration is doing a book study, we could just be included in on it, just read, even if we just read the book, and we don't even have discussions about it, at least we know what they're doing, right? We read the books that they're reading and what they're learning.
Yeah, because Kathy, actually, she assigned us questions.
Back in school.
She was a teacher from her school, so, yeah, she assigned questions, and we had to generate our responses and be accountable for them, so you really had to read that book, you did not want to be embarrassed here, so.
Did you pass?
Of course. Of course, didn't you even ask?
If the board would, I mean, I'm just trying to be a support system here, so if the board would have an interest in doing that, you know, I could, I mean, we're flexible here, so I was thinking originally that I could maybe pick three books and put them before the board, and the board could decide what they would like to study, however, if, you know, you'd like for us to choose a book and then provide that to the board, we could do that as well, so whatever the board chooses, we'll be happy to support that.
I like that, I think, I think it's a good idea either way, but I sort of like the idea of you kind of tailoring that book towards what you think would be most beneficial for the board and for the district overall, I mean, that's where I think you get the most out of it, you know, like, is that sort of aligned with your goals?
Sure.
And the vision that we can support you in that, by trying to understand the topic and the issues a little, little more fully.
I'm flexible.
Right.
Does kind of book have pictures in it?
And a small number of pages.
Hold on, let me start taking some.
No, I think that's, I think that's good, I think that really could be separate from the personal development, a book, book study, and the reason I say that is because it might not be related to the governing, governance of the school board, and I would, I think, having a goal of being, learning more about what your function on the board is, I think that would be beneficial, so, but I'm okay having that as one of our goals, I mean, what's, what's everyone else's wishes? I mean, I'm not sure, Mrs. Gundrum, I know that, being an attorney, you have a lot of reading to do from time to time, and I don't know how that affects you, and if you have the availability to just pick up a book, we'd almost have to go by, if we are assigned one, our timeframe of completion, you may have to help us with that, because some of us have more time to read than maybe others, so we might look to you to say, okay, well, this is kind of an aggressive reading schedule for me, and so we would have to be flexible to things that you're available to do as well.
I appreciate that, usually, most of my reading time is after my daughter goes to bed, so it can be limited at times in the evening, so, but I, yeah, I definitely appreciate, you know, nothing the size of War and Peace.
Okay.
No War and Peace.
So it, so it looks like right now, we have two, possibly three of our goals, is there something else up there that?
So I, so I was seeing it almost as four goals, so there was community involvement, professional, or personal development, the book study, and then the fourth one could be almost the governance stuff, the city council parks, BAC, county, do you think?
Yeah.
So it's almost like school involvement, and then community involvement.
I would tell you that the CDA is more, I would feel better if that was in what the community, school community involvement, maybe that's what the board should be, is school community involvement, whereas the local government would be community involvement, because that is more directly related to what's going on in the district itself.
Yeah.
So I would, I would be comfortable with that being part of the.
Split your area, your arrow, Gina.
And the reason I think, the reason I think I would split those out is because I think it's important for us to be seen in the school, and I think it's important for us to be seen in the community, and I don't want any one of us to just be seen in the school, or just be seen in the community, so I think that's why I would separate the two, unless it's two separate goals.
So should the CDA be by itself, do you think it should be by itself, Lina?
Well, I mean, it almost could be, because at one point, it was something that we, we did, we supported it on a regular basis, but if you sort of roll it in, I'm going either way, I'm committing to getting myself out there, making sure that I'm there regardless, so.
In the past, has there been, I remember that Mr. Murray was on the CDA at one point while he was a board member, but I don't know if there were other board members that were, just not.
I think it was Mr. Morris and, and then further ahead of this, myself, and the rest of you.
I was on there before I was a board member.
Right, it was you and I.
I mean, before I was a board member, I was on the CDA, not since I've been on the board.
Not since you've been on the board, okay, I know there were definitely two.
Was that something that we should just do, is just, we should have someone on the CDA?
I think so.
I don't think it really had to be a goal, that could just be one of our committees, like, we, we have someone on the parks committee, we have someone on the business, and now we should have maybe someone on the CDA.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, I would probably.
Top it for another day, though, just figure out who wants to do that, who should be doing that, or?
Yeah, top it for another day, and we'll figure out.
Okay, but it could be a goal for other board members that are not sitting on the board to attend the meetings.
Yeah.
So I think we could leave that up there as part of the school involvement.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And I would just like to mention, the CDA really has evolved over the years, and I know we've talked about service, so as it stands now, the, the CDA has really turned into a service-oriented committee, where we talk, you know, they're, you know, they're, the back-school bash originated from the CDA, the outreach is that we've been doing last year with the school supplies and the book bags, that came out of the CDA, so just in every, anyone and everyone is welcome to attend, but, you know, since we're talking about service, I, I wanted to just plant that seed in your minds, that it really has evolved at this moment in time to a service committee, and we just, you know, we get into subgroups and subcommittees, and each subcommittee's working on a different project, you know, different project that would serve the community, and so on and so forth, so, just, I just wanted to share that perspective.
So, so is the book study one of the, that's number four, is the fundraisers maybe part of the school involvement?
Sure, if it's a school fundraiser.
Because it's a school fundraiser, right? I mean, that's. So maybe what we could do is, I'll take a screenshot, if we can leave that up on the board, and then I'll take a screenshot of it and try to put it in a document, and then at our next meeting, should it be work session material, or could it be the school board meeting?
I think we can do either one, if you'd like to.
About in our next meeting, we just kind of look at them again, just to say, okay, yeah, that's what we talked about, and we can start formulating a plan on how to, how to evaluate it as well. Does that sound good?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for participating in that, I think this, this is going to be a, a good start to our setting of goals and trying to better ourselves as a board as a whole. Thank you.
All right, I'm turning back from taking my notes. Next, we have OSBA Annual Conference Appointment of Delegate and Alternate, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Burdy.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we do need to identify a voting delegate for the annual business meeting on November 11th, and Mr. Shorter, you've done that in the past, you are a legislative liaison. And Mrs. Shorter, you've done that in the past, you are a legislative liaison, do you wish to do that again?
Definitely, I enjoy going up, enjoy listening to the information, and some, just hearing some of the issues that some of the other districts are encountering. I think it's always instructive, try to bring back information to the board to make sure that we're, you know, all benefiting from what I learned. But it's, it's definitely a good opportunity, I intend to go this year if allowed.
Is the rest of the board okay with Mrs. Shorter? She does a great job, so. Would someone like to be the alternate to go? Is there any interest?
So you would only go if the delegate cannot attend?
Right, if the delegate cannot attend, you would be the alternate to go up?
I can't go that way.
Okay.
I could be the delegate.
You could be the alternate?
Alternate.
Okay. That will be something that we vote on later in the meeting. So I understand we're gonna, we're gonna appoint Mrs. Shorter as the delegate, and Mr. Begley as the alternate. Okay, sounds great.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next two items for board discussion will be covered by Mr. Martin. His first item, some discussion about an EA position at our high school, and then he'll be talking about a few board policies. This time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Burden, members of the board. The first item I have is about a new educational assistant position. Bringing this item on behalf of Kathy Gilbert, our Director of Special Services. And there is a need in our high school, in our social communications classroom, for an additional educational assistant. I say it's additional, in reality, we've had someone in that position for two years as a substitute teacher, because the need was so great, so we subbed the position out for two years. But at this point, the union would like to see us make that subposition permanent, because it looks like we will need that position from here on out. And it's because this group of students have very severe academic, behavioral, social, emotional needs, so they need that extra assistance in there. This is paid for out of IDEA funds, so it's not, doesn't come out of our general budget. And Mrs. Gilbert, or Ms. Gilbert, would look for just a nod from the board to be able to go ahead and get that person in place for the start of the school year.
That sounds, sounds like we need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The second item I have is, I'm bringing back to you two board policies, policy BDDH and policy KD, a copy of the policies in your board, they're exactly duplicate policies, they look exactly alike, except for the alphabet at the top of them. We've already discussed this policy at our last meeting, but I'm bringing it back. Our legal counsel, John Clemmons, he was reading some judgments and some decisions that have been made regarding area schools. And he felt that inserting a sentence in this document, one more sentence, would provide some coverage for our school, and would strengthen the document and put us in a better position. So the position, the sentence that we would like to add is in red on your document, and I'll read that. "The presiding officer is responsible for the orderly conduct of all meetings, and shall have authority to require persons addressing the board to do so in an orderly, productive, and efficient manner." That's the addition that we would like to see. I do have this policy on a little later in the board to be approved, so if there's any discussion about that, we can, can have that at this time.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Martin? Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next item for more discussion, revised courses of study for ELA, Social Studies and Science. I'll turn it over to Ms. Saul.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Burden, members of the board. I'd like to share, share with you for your review, the three courses of study Mr. Smith mentioned. The changes for ELA and Social Studies are minor. The only change in the ELA course of study is that we added Journalism II. So it went from just Journalism as the title to Journalism I and II. For Social Studies, the changes reflect changes made by the College Board to the AP US Government Course of Study. And then Science, we have several changes in the Science Course of Study, so I will highlight those for you. There were no changes made K through eight yet, we'll be making those changes along with the curriculum revisions in this upcoming school year. But the changes to the course of study for grades nine through 12 included several things. And those were meant to reflect the changes passed down from ODE for the science standards. So you'll see some changes in the philosophy, the foreword, just the introduction of all the standards. So one comment I do need to make here is that, at the time that this was revised, the model curriculum hadn't been released yet. So we're going to have to come back and put the model curriculum in that, of course, it came out this week. So we tried to wait as long as we could, and we just got an email Tuesday afternoon that ODE had released the model curriculum. And so, Ms. Wegman, we'll, we'll go back and, and add that into the course of study, and we'll bring that back to you for your review at a later date. Additional changes in the course of study include changes to, or updates to AP Environmental and AP Physics II. And those, again, reflect changes made by the College Board for those AP courses. There was also some additional language around our advanced science courses, you know, just to make sure that we were following the guidelines of higher education. And the literacy content standards for science were also updated, and that's a reflection of work from, from a school year. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Good morning.
I would like to know a little bit more about the science standards, the updates that we've made based on input from, you know, our internal district assessments on that. Can you give some specifics about that pertaining to, what were those areas that you guys were highlighting for change? What's, you know, what's driving that, and what's going to be, I guess, the method for delivery?
For just grades nine through 12 right now? I will have to ask and get back to you, because I was not part of the revision committee at all. So, you know, I know that the changes right now from ODE tend to be minor. You know, they're switching things around from, at least in K through eight grade level. They'll say, you know, we're striking this and moving it to grade four, and it used to be in grade three. For high school, for the physical science, for the biology courses, for the physics courses, obviously, they're not moving content, but, you know, they did give us a crosswalk, and so I can share that crosswalk with you, and you'll be able to see exactly what the changes were for each course. So they just sent that crosswalk out Tuesday with the model curriculum revisions.
Okay. So it's not necessarily new content, it's a restructuring of what's already there, like the order in which things are presented? Okay.
So it doesn't seem anything related to math? That means they have no updates or changes, and we're comfortable too, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm.
I, I, there's nothing related to math? We've got science, social studies, English?
Oh, correct, correct, they just did the updates to these. So math probably should have happened last year. But I can, I can find out their last revision for math.
Okay. Thank you very much.